Good evening and welcome to the October 23rd, 2023 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have two topics for discussion, but before we get to those, first, we have a few announcements. First, we need a motion to conduct a closed executive session. Neil.
Mr. Mayor, I moved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Gaithersburg conduct a closed executive session immediately following its session tonight, Monday, October 23rd, 2023, pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Sections 3-305B14, to discuss before a contract is awarded or bids are open a matter directly related to a negotiation strategy or contents of a bid or proposal if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process and 3-305B1I to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, couldn't do it in one breath, sorry, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The topics to be discussed are proposals to retain a consultant to conduct the recruitment for a new city attorney and a personnel matter to conduct the city manager's annual review.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that carries three zero. Next, we have an announcement about the elections. I will turn that over to Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gaithersburg residents will cast their ballots for three city council members on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. The city is conducting a hybrid election in 2023. Applications can be returned via the United States Postal Service, dropped off at City Hall, or completed electronically. One voter center will be located at the Activity Center at Boer Park for in-person voting. In addition, there will be seven ballot drop boxes located throughout the city. While applications will be accepted at City Hall until 5:00 PM on Tuesday, November 7th, no mail-in ballots will be mailed to voters after Wednesday, November 1st. Ballots must be picked up at City Hall between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. An early voting session will be held at the Activity Center on Sunday, October 29th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, that is this Sunday. The voter center will be open on Election Day, Tuesday, November 7th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. For complete election information, go to www.gaithersburgmd.gov/elections or contact Elections Clerk Lauren Klinger at 240-805-1087 or by email at cietelections@gaithersburgmd.gov.
Thank you, Jim. And last announcement, I promise. Notice is given that Mayor and Council will not have sessions on Monday, October 30th, Monday, November 6th, or Monday, November 13th due to the upcoming 2023 city elections. A special session will be held on Monday, November 20th solely to receive the certification of election results and to swear in the newly-elected city council members. The special session will be conducted pursuant to a motion properly adopted by the Mayor and Council on Monday, November 20th. We will conduct a hybrid work session on Monday, November 27th to receive annual briefings from the Environmental Affairs, Economic and Business Development, and Transportation Committees. The next regular session of the Mayor and Council will be on Monday, December 4th. And if you have any questions about how to participate in our meetings, go to gaithersburgmd.gov/meetings. Next, we're going to go into our first discussion topic, which is the first year's findings of the Gaithersburg History Project. And Shelley, did you want to come introduce, come forward and introduce this?
Thank you.
Okay, Shelley Williams, our Cultural Events and Services Division Chief, will introduce.
Thank you so much, and I'm so happy to be here this evening with you all. We're going to be sharing updates from the Gaithersburg History Project, which we call GHP. So if you hear that, that's what we're talking about. This is a very ambitious project, and it hasn't been without challenges, but we've had some major victories as well, and you'll hear more about that in just a few minutes. But what I'd like to do right now is introduce you to our newest member of the museum team, and that is Cynthia Cowan.
Let's give her a round of applause. Welcome, Cynthia.
As you know, Nancy Wild, who was our inaugural director for the museum, retired in May, and then she retired again in September. And she really has stepped down this time, and she's handed over the reins to Cynthia, and we're just delighted to have her. Cynthia comes to Gaithersburg originally from Texas, so you will hear y'all occasionally, but she came by way of Boston, where she has been serving and doing educational programming and property management for historic buildings and historic sites. She has a master's in history. She has a master's in public administration. So she is no stranger to budgets, strategic planning, program development, research, exhibitions, interpretation, and on and on and on. And I'm just so happy to have her here. Oh, and grant writing as well. And lastly, she has a very, very strong commitment to presenting multiple perspectives in research and museum interpretation so that we can tell everybody's story, and I'm really excited to have her here. Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you, Shelley. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Cynthia Cowan, your new community facility manager for the Gaithersburg Community Museum. I want to take a moment to express my gratitude for your support of the Gaithersburg History Project. This profoundly important work will have benefits that reverberate throughout the community well beyond the walls of the museum. Thank you for your support. I'm here tonight with scholar Tony Cohen to brief you on the first phase of our project, our exploration of the history of Gaithersburg's Black community. The written histories of Gaithersburg have not always included the whole of our community, telling some people's stories and leaving others out. In order to better understand and represent the history of our diverse cultural groups that make up the city of Gaithersburg, the Community Museum launched the Gaithersburg History Project. This ongoing project aims to research and record the important community stories, contributions, challenges, dreams, and everyday life, essential to sharing a fuller history of our city. Knowing more of who we are and where we come from will help the museum and the city provide residents with education and connection. Cultivating this sense of belonging, we can truly be a community museum. Our first three phases are clear. Demographics of the city tell us that our Black, Latina, and AAPI neighbors are integral parts of our community, whose stories must be added to the too太多 white-centric narratives that have defined our city's histories to date. We continue to discuss which two groups will best complete the project in service of our goal of a fuller, more comprehensive approach to who we are and where we come from. The work we are doing now helps inform where this project will go, not only in the Latina and Asian-American Pacific Islander phases, but thereafter as well. But for the bulk of our presentation tonight, I want to turn the mic over to Tony Cohen, the scholar conducting our research into Black history. Tony Cohen is the founder and president of the Minare Foundation Incorporated, a national nonprofit organization that is dedicated to preserving the legacy of the Underground Railroad and operates the Button Farm Living History Center, a 40-acre farm depicting 1850s plantation life in Maryland. He has served on the Governor's Board for Tourism Development for the state of Maryland and has worked for the past decade as an interpretive consultant for the Harriet Tubman Underground Railroad Byway in Maryland and Delaware, on the Design Review Team for the National Park Service's Harriet Tubman Underground Railroad State Park and Visitor Center in Blackwater, Maryland, and most recently as Director of Historical Interpretation for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. He is a founding member of the Montgomery County Lynching Memorial Project. He has also served as a consultant to the National Parks Conservation Association, to Maryland Public Television, and NASA, among others, and trained Oprah Winfrey for her role as Setha in the 1998 motion picture Beloved.
We've heard of Oprah Winfrey, right? Welcome, welcome.
Thank you for having me here today, and I'm thrilled to be able to share some of the progress that we have made on this project. First, just briefly talk about recovering the stories of Black Gaithersburg, which has been the focus of this, and that begins with defining the area of study. So we are looking for history that is represented in the areas that are today part of Gaithersburg, Gaithersburg zip codes. If you can see the, I'll get to that in a second, and this includes pre and post emancipation communities, Black institutions, so we're talking about churches, we're talking about schools and other social groups, kind of the three pillars of the Black community, and the impacts of that history on present-day Gaithersburg. If you can see the map, starting at the top and kind of going counterclockwise, we have the communities of Brook Grove, which is near Latinsville, Goshen, down to Clopper, also associated with Metropolitan Grove, Quince Orchard, Hunting Hill, Durwood, Redland, and Emery Grove. And that forms kind of the cultural beltway, if you will, around the study area. And within that study area, there are standout communities such as Prather Town, Stewart Town, and Historic Gaithersburg itself, which has long carried the reputation of having no Black people until recently. But the evidence is actually showing that there were settlements, family groupings, and small hamlets, and what some people refer to as pocket locations throughout. So a deep story is emerging. So Research Phase 1, which I've been working on for the past year or so, covers the period of Revolution to Reconstruction, and touches on early settlements and African arrival, enslaved and freed Black families and figures, anti-slavery and resistance movements, Black ownership, and civil war and emancipation. So one of the first questions that we had was, when did the Black presence appear here in Gaithersburg or the study area? And it goes back to the early 1770s, before we were even a county, and we have actually discovered at least one family who was brought over on a slave ship and were among the first settlers in the study area and are currently tracing that family down to the present. We even know the name of the slave ship and where it likely embarked from, out of Africa. So that kind of research is few and far between, but it's, I think, quite a coup for the project. We're also discovering, or tapping into history, that's been obscured by the historical record. So for instance, I discovered one family who has been long associated with Summit Hall and was free before emancipation. And the reason this family didn't appear in previous record searches was in part because the DeSelams, who were at Summit Hall, appeared in almost every record under a different spelling of their name. So it just took some tracking of their neighbors and land records to then find them and then find the people who were around them. So we're learning some neat things about Summit Hall. And coming up, the phase of the project I'm working on right now, Phase 2, focuses on incorporation in 1878 and the 100 years that followed to 1978. And we'll be looking at emerging communities, expanding Gaithersburg, the period between the war, and entrepreneurs, businesses, and leaders, and civil rights to civil society. I think you can see an image of Mrs. Dora Dorsey. She is one of the interesting people who emerges. She was a teacher. She was also an independent businesswoman. She lived in Metropolitan Grove and ran a country inn. And during the 1930s, she worked for the Federal Writers Project, and she was a poet, and even published a book of poems from the Franklin Press, which was a publishing house located here in Gaithersburg, just up the street.
You said around what years?
She was writing in the '30s and '40s, and I think she passed in 1952.
Thank you.
And so those are some of the highlights of the research.
As Tony draws his research work to a close, we turn our attention to the interpretive products we can generate to share that research with the community. Our plans include the elements you see listed on your screen, which we will produce with the help of an interpretive planner. I'll be telling you more about on an upcoming slide. Our goal is to push these elements beyond the walls of the museum, out into the community, expanding our reach beyond our small physical footprint to enable more of Gaithersburg to engage with more of their history. So we will be producing pop-up exhibits. We will be producing digital storytelling. We will be incorporating oral histories, recording them, so that we can contribute those to the body of knowledge around Gaithersburg history and make them available for future scholars to do research with. We envision public programs. We already have some in the works. Tony will be presenting on November 7th about some of this research. We will also likely be producing magazine articles, and of course, the final report will come from Tony's research that will also become part of the project record. At the same time that we are drawing our Black history research to a close and turning our attention to interpretive planning, we are gearing up for the next phase of research, Latina Gaithersburg. Now, you've already seen some of what we have contributed to the community's understanding of Latina history. The 1.5 generation exhibit that panel excerpts from are seen on this slide was an exhibit that was, until recently, actually on display at the Activity Center as part of Hispanic Heritage Month. We look forward to continuing to build on that work and to digging further into the stories of first-generation, 1.5-generation, and second-generation immigrant families, as well as others from Latina heritage that contribute to the fabric of our community. We were delighted to learn in August that we have been awarded a $45,000 INSPIRE grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences. This federal grant will provide critical funding for a project manager to keep the work on track as we begin the next stages of the project, but it will also fund the interpretive planner I referred to before to develop an exciting suite of products, such as videos, publications, programs, oral history, and storytelling, and to do so in all languages and platforms that are accessible to our readers, sorry, to our residents. It's not exactly fair to do work in Latina history and not make our products available in Spanish. While these same issues will become more complex as we move into representing the Asian-American Pacific Islander community in Gaithersburg, we are committed to accessibility as a key part of the work we're doing with the Gaithersburg History Project. But we appreciate your support and the opportunity to share our progress with you tonight, Mayor and Council. At this point, we'll turn things over to you as we're happy to address any questions you have about how this project has proceeded, the work that we have accomplished, and the work left ahead of us.
Thank you very much. Tony, in particular, I'm really interested in what you found and what's going to be presented. I happen to be reading a great civil rights history right now, one of the Taylor Branch books. I don't know if you, it was, it came out in the '90s and maybe it was the '80s, and it won a Pulitzer, and it was great. And so I find myself really curious about what Gaithersburg, what was happening in the Black community in Gaithersburg in, you know, the 1954, 1964 time period. But obviously, the presence of Black people in this area predates even when it was called Gaithersburg. It was log town at that point. So it's really fascinating, and I thank you for your work and look forward to seeing it. Cynthia, welcome, and thanks for the presentation. I do, I have one question that I'm really posing more sort of rhetorically than to put you on the spot, so you don't have to answer it. But I had, before this presentation, I had never heard the term Latina. I've heard Latinx, and I've obviously heard Latino, and I've heard Hispanic. And in my experience, and it's anecdotal, obviously, but having spoken with Hispanic people locally here and in Miami where I was originally from, generally, I haven't seen a lot of adoption among the Hispanic community of Latinx or, I mean, I hadn't even heard of Latina, so I didn't ask that question. So I would just want us to do a little bit of outreach in our own Hispanic community and make sure they're comfortable. We're going to go to the effort to produce this material in Spanish as we should. I don't want to offend anybody, you know, and I don't want to get into necessarily a debate about anglicizing the Hispanic language like that. But anyway, I just want to put that out there. I don't want to put you on the spot. I just want to.
No, it's actually something I don't mind responding to at all, and you are correct, Mr. Mayor, to want to be sensitive about our use of language. The word Latina rose as a gender-neutral alternative to Latinx or Latinx, which, in my experience, as has been reported to me, because I will fully acknowledge, I am a white lady. These are not my cultures and my history. But there is a feeling among a number of people across a range of cultures that fall into this grouping, that the notion of Latinx or Latinx is not natural to the language or the culture, that it was an early and important attempt to offer a non-gendered approach to that term, but that it didn't land quite right. And Latina has risen as an alternative that some, I might even go so far as to say many, find to be more in line with the spirit and the nature of Spanish as a language. And so I think you will start to see this word in more places and that it will ultimately supplant Latinx or Latinx as the gender-neutral option. From my own personal experience, I was working last year, a year before, with a student who was born and raised in Mexico, and he was actually the one who introduced me to this term, and he said, "No, no, this is the way of the future. This is where my people want to go." Now, he is one man. He does not speak for others, and we are listening, and we will be continuing to listen. And it's important to note that with this phase of the project, as with the prior phase of the project, we are seeking to be led by scholars who are experts in their field. And at the end of the day, if we are told we need a different term, we will proceed with a different term.
Fair enough.
Mayor, if I may, you might recall that the city hired Hazel Monae as our racial equity coordinator earlier this year, and the very first, I think, question that she got from staff that turned into several week-long discussion was, "What do we do with this term?" I'm looking at Shelley because I think she might have kicked this off. I think that, you know, to the point, there is some controversy in the community still about what to do with the term. I think there's some buy-in in some cultures, and others are, you know, questioning whether that's the way to go. And so we have to be flexible and sensitive, and I think it was the right question to ask. So we continue to have this discussion.
I'm sure we'll do the best thing here, so thank you. Any questions or comments related to the rest? Lisa?
Thank you. Thank you, Cynthia and Tony, for the presentation. It is absolutely fascinating. I was born and raised in Montgomery County, right outside of Gaithersburg. I was raised in Durwood. I have always understood Gaithersburg to be a place where no Black people were born, but transferred from other places, mostly North Germantown and Frederick. So it's extremely fascinating to hear, particularly the last name Dorsey, which is still prevalent, a prevalent name in Montgomery County, and that relation to Summit Hall. So thank you for bringing this knowledge forward. I really appreciate it. Thank you both.
And at some point, I would like to have a conversation or interview you about your family history.
Absolutely. I'll turn you over to my mother. She knows everything.
But you're on the right track. They have deep roots in this county, for sure.
My father was born in Rockville, so we should definitely talk.
All right. Jim, go ahead.
Welcome, Cynthia and Tony. Thank you for the information. It is so fascinating. You know, I moved here. I've been in Gaithersburg almost 15 years. But it is so fascinating just seeing the way that you go about doing the work and understand the history and going back, you know, before the ages of Google, right? And being able to really track down this information. I've done my own genealogy through Ancestry and did the DNA, and it's always fascinating to see, you know, what those stories tell. And I think it's just an important part of the Gaithersburg story to be able to tell the full story like we're attempting here. You know, and we like to say, you know, we live our values and reflecting that as being the most diverse city in the country and being able to point to all of these different stories and allow our kids, as they're studying, to be able to point to their own paths through these stories and making it easier to find those. So I can't wait to see this continue to unfold. I'm excited. I'm excited for the community, for them to be able to have even better understanding of where we live. So thank you, and I look forward to more.
Yeah, and if you don't mind my saying, in Phase 2, we're hoping to put together some basis of a community family tree. And what I am imagining this will be is handwritten notes on a page for future funding. But since you've done Ancestry, I'm going to go out on a limb here, funding a project in the future where perhaps we can get these families together using the power of DNA to figure out the family connections, because a lot of the families overlap. You take any historically Black name from Gaithersburg, you'll find out where they live now, but where they're from, it's a web. And a lot of the questions that still exist are, who were we before emancipation? And so a project like that could be very telling. And so a project like that could be very telling and also very engendering for the community, so. It's for future funding.
I, I should say that, you know, as we seek to tell a better history of black Gaithersburg, as we seek to tell a better history of Latina Gaithersburg, as we seek to tell a better history of any of the communities within our city, the work that we're doing with this project is foundational. I mean, we could, we could spend years on any one of these groups with a whole team of researchers and still not have everything there is to, to have. But the work that we're doing will provide a foundation for better histories as we move forward and for expanding, as Tony describes, the work that can be done. This is, this is where it starts, and that's why this work is so important.
Love it. Love it. Okay, I am most, raise your hand if you want to testify, if you have any questions or comments that you want to testify to. I figure we have mostly staff here and presenters, so, and I'm looking, let me just look at the viewer, I don't see anybody on Zoom currently, so, so thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll, were you?
No, I was agreeing.
Oh, you were agreeing with me.
And certainly, as and when anyone does have questions, I would encourage them to reach out to us at the museum. We are always happy to talk to anyone, the, the community at large, about this work. So please, give, give us a chance to talk about it.
I love this project. If for nothing else, we found perhaps the matriarch of, of our book festival, Dora Dorsey, who was, was publishing poetry in the 30s and 40s and lived near Metropolitan Grove. That's great, that's great stuff. Thank you, guys. Shelley, come on up. We, we need to be at a mic.
I would be remiss not to also point out that Karen Lottis is here with us, and that she has been shepherding this project since the very, very beginning, and has been a humongous part of making this happen. So I just want to point out that she's here with us today.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Sure, round of applause. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next topic for discussion, and we're gonna talk about the I-270 NIST East Shared Use Path Design Project Update. Mark Kyle from our Public Works Department and Shashi Patel from Mead and Hunt will come brief us.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I am Mark Kyle with Engineering Services, and I'm joined by Shashi Patel with Mead and Hunt, who is the project's consulting team lead. Mead and Hunt, along with staff, would like to provide a project update for the I-270 NIST East Shared Use Path. Tonight, the project team will provide a high level of the project design, the stakeholders, and coordination efforts, and next steps. The primary goal of this is to support multimodal transportation in the city of Gaithersburg. This project creates a connection from West Diamond Avenue to Muddy Branch Road. The path is planned to be 10 feet wide, which will increase safety by reducing vehicle conflict points. The possibility of adding a trailhead on West Diamond Avenue is still being studied to determine if this could be installed within the SHA right away. The city, to give a little bit of background, the city received a $200,000 M.D. Kim Lampier's Bike Way Network grant in October 2022, with support to design to 65%. The city was also recently awarded a second grant in September 2023, just recently, and of, for $176,000, which will take the project to 100% design. The current estimated construction budget is approximately $175 million. However, as the design, detailed design continues, the estimate continues to be refined and updated based on updated information. On page 24 of your packet, this map illustrates the NIST loop with the portion of the I-270 NIST East Shared Use Path running from West Diamond Avenue to Muddy Branch Road on the right side of the image. Mead and Hunt, along with city staff, have been coordinating with NIST, WSSC, and MDOT to provide early feedback. The project has been guided from NIST input throughout the early process. As a project continues, the city will need to secure a memorandum of understanding to permit the path on the NIST property. I will turn it to the presentation over to Shashi Patel with Mead and Hunt to discuss the existing conditions and some of the constraints.
Good evening, everyone. So as you can see on this screen, on the lower-left side of this screen, you see the project site, and to just orient, and giving up the idea of the project location. The one on the middle, on, on, on that lower-left picture, the I-270 running north-south, and the left side of the 270 is the NIST property, and the project site is located just close to I-270.
Mark, if you, if you run the cursor over it, we can see the cursor, if you let it stay still, it disappears.
Yeah, so that, that's where the cursor is to I-270.
Yeah.
It's running north, north-south, and the project site is located on just left of, or west of 270, along NIST property. Those buildings that you see on the left, that campus is I, the NIST campus. And overall, there are three major stakeholders for this project. As you can see, NIST is on the left, and there are, and the WSSC, which has, there are two water mains running along this project site, that, which is, one is 36 inch water main, and one is 48 inch water main, and they are both on NIST property, but along to I-270. And M.D.SHA is on, which is I-270, M.D.SHA owns I-270, and there is a future widening of I-270 that will occur as a part of the widening on the NIST property site, which is on west side, and that's where our project site is located at. And generally, our project site is running along those two water mains. We are at preliminary design stage at the moment, and the projects, the overall total length of the, the trail or shared use path is about one mile long. The shared use path began at Muddy Branch Road, and it ends on, on, on West Diamond Avenue. So overall, this project site is to, for a better visibility, we had broken up in four different sheets. The very first sheet that is, the projects, the trail will connect to existing sidewalk along Muddy Branch Road, and it will move around northward within or around WSSC is meant, where those two water mains exist. And it will continue along I-270 and NIST fence, NIST property, and it is generally in open space, that you can see in this picture that most of this, most portion of the shared use path will be in open space. This is the third sheet of the overall design, and it is still following the same credit, the path, it is following the WSSC water main and along the NIST property. This is the northernmost portion of the project site, where you can see I-270 on-ramp from West Diamond Avenue, and the project, the, the shared use path will connect to the existing trail along West Diamond Avenue on the north end. This project will also, as Mark mentioned, that we will investigate the potential opportunity for the plaza where it connects, the, the new trail connects to the existing trail at, on West Diamond Avenue. The plaza, here are the, some of the rela-, I would say, representative pictures of the plaza, how it will look like when it, it is built. These will provide some, you know, seating areas or some wayfinding messages or signs that can be put on in this area. Project impacts, this project will be mainly running along the existing fence on a NIST property. That fence runs between I, I-270 and, and the NIST property, and that fence will likely get impacted. Also, there will be some impacts on existing trails. Also, because of this trail construction, there'll be runoff that we will have to manage as a stormwater management permit. And on the north end, right before it connects, the trail connects to the existing one, there is a culvert crossing. That cross, the culvert will require extension too. And the special attention that we will have to pay during the construction is that the trail construction is very close to the, those two water mains, so very special precaution will be taken during the construction, using the construction equipment and so forth. So stakeholder coordination status, we had contacted those three, three main stakeholders, we had three meetings with the NIST, and that's how we had discussed our alignment options and revisions, and that's how we came up with this current alignment as we stand right now. Also, we had met with the WSSC and gathered some information from them on existing water mains and their expectations. So as design progress, we will contact them and ask them to provide review comments and so forth, and so forth. Same thing with M.D.SHA, we had a meeting with them twice, and we had discussed this current alignment, and as the design progressed, at 30% design stage, we will distribute the design plans with them for them to review and comment. This project will require several permits, mainly, those are listed here, one is an NEPA that we will have to work through NIST and M.D.SHA. Stormwater management permit, as I mentioned, it will be required, and it, and stormwater management, and erosion, and sediment control permit, that will come through Department of Public Works, City of Gaithersburg. Same thing for forest conservation or tree permit, and since we will be working along or, or connecting to M.D.SHA facilities, we will have to acquire M.D.SHA access permit, and it is called access permit or utility permit, and we are at, all these permits will be applied at 30% design stage. And next step, I'll turn over to Mark.
Sure. So currently, we're looking at moving forward with the 30% design, we're approaching that currently, and finishing up towards the end of this year. Once that's generated as part of the grant process, we have to do some additional public outreach, and one of those components, we have a current website, we look to encourage the public to come back and review the drawings and provide feedback. We'll set up a time there in, in a January timeframe. We will then turn into starting to apply any necessary permanent applications, starting to get any kind of final feedback from some of the stakeholders in this, and then ultimately move on to the 65% design. The first grant that we've received, we go up to 65% design, we kind of stop, and then we have to keep on going with the 90 and 100, since we just successfully received a, a second grant that, that enabled us to move forward with the, the next phases. Looking for final design and bid documents towards the beginning part of 2025, and then with the construction, ultimately, we hope, we, we are looking forward to maybe applying for a future grant, brings, brings us really an opportunity for this project with multiple grant opportunities. So that will be something we look forward to, for that. If it's not exactly 25, 26, it's somewhere in that, that general timeframe is what we're looking for. Again, if you, if you have any questions, we would be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. It all seems pretty straightforward to me. Any questions or comments? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mark. Thank you, Shashi, for your presentation. First, I want to congratulate you and, and the teams for, for getting 100% of design covered by grants. That's fantastic, and appreciate the work in, in, in tracking that down, and I'm excited that you'll be continuing to pursue other funding to help with the construction. I did want to ask a couple of questions. One about the, you showed a plaza at the end of the, under the path when it comes to West Diamond, and I ride my bike past there quite often, and it just seems like an odd place for a plaza, given its, its distance from the entrance to NIST and the, the shopping areas. If anything, it's almost like, like a quarter of the way between locations. Can you talk about that a little bit?
So one of the things that my predecessors came up with was an opportunity to possibly use that area as, like a display area, you can provide upcoming events, maybe NIST has a current, you know, it's, it's kind of a hybrid approach where NIST also has a, has an alternative transportation committee as well, that they, they look at opportunities. We kind of look at that as a, as a possibility to provide future for, you know, upcoming events, that, you know, you're riding by on your bike, or just take a, take a rest period in that general area, just kind of give an opportunity to transition on that general area.
Okay. Yeah, it just, I just wonder how much, you know, that is going to be used as far as like benches and whatnot, might be worth, you know, looking at that. If, if that end makes sense, you know, to everybody, then that, that's fine, it just seemed a little out of place there to me. You mentioned in your notes that the current, current outline falls within the expanded grading of 270, so talk a little bit about how that might need to shift to make sure that we don't have to do this again if 270 does indeed expand.
So we've been working with NIST, and primarily where the path will reside is on the NIST property itself. We've, we've received input for where the LOD would be, however, they don't really know exactly where that's going to fall from MDOT. It's currently in study phases, they're multiple years out at this point. It was, at current date, with NIST, they're looking for us to be at the perimeter. They're not willing to, at this point, push inward to the NIST property for different security reasons and what have you. So we've had multiple meetings to try to refine that and provide as much flexibility for us at this current state while making the path, the connection from West Diamond to Muddy Branch Road.
So at this point, it sounds like we might have to leave it in a place where 270 could end up impacting it?
There, there is a possibility. We do not know extensively if it is truly in that area at this point. Again, there's, this particular phase of the I-270 widening isn't a definite yet, so we don't know where that currently truly stands at this point, so.
Okay. All right. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Neil?
So question on the budget. You, you mentioned that you've got a grant already for the 65% design, and I think you had said you had a grant for the rest of the design as well. What about construction? Is that all on us, or where's that budget coming from?
So the 1.75 million is just an estimate at this point. We have to have a finished design to explore different grant opportunities in the future, one of which we're hoping to apply for a TAP grant. That would be a nice added to this particular project, but we need the 100%. we need the 100% design plans to move that forward. So we're, I hate to say, moving Mead and Hunt to go as quickly as they possibly can. But we did time the grant and everything very timely so we can transition from the 65, 90, and 100 ultimately.
All right. And just as a side note, you know, we've done a number of the shared use paths projects in other parts of the city, or at least have gone through the design and gotten ready. They've come in a little less than this for that length. I think $1.2 million is the number that I saw, at least on a couple, for about a mile. Is this because of inflation of construction costs, or is there something else that makes this more?
We're starting to see elevated numbers. One of, a couple of the things that's adding to this is relocation of the fencing. That's part of this. We're looking at a little bit additional length in some components of this, but generally, we are seeing elevated costs coming into play at this point. We're hoping we get good bids coming in in the future, but ultimately, we do see construction cost rising.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I don't believe that there's any testimonies out here. And let me just take a look on-- It's a wasp. I brought over a paper towel just so if it got within arm's length, I was going to get up and kill the thing, but-- Sorry.
That's actually an agenda item.
Okay. Well, we thank you, unless anybody has any other questions. We thank you for the presentation. No testimony, so appreciate it. Keep, you know, keep us posted on the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our second topic, our second and last discussion topic for tonight. As a reminder, we do have an executive session immediately following this meeting. I will also remind you that we will not have sessions on Monday, October 30th, Monday, November 6th, or Monday, November 13th due to upcoming city elections. Here's a reminder, please vote. And we will come join us on Monday, November 20th to swear in the newly elected council members and hear the certification of results. And then we will have a work session to receive committee briefings on November 27th. The next regular meeting of the mayor and council will be on Monday, December 4th. And happy Halloween. Until next time, happy Thanksgiving, you know, happy everything. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.